This is a call to order for the City of Danone, Danone City Council Meeting, October 11th, 2021. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you all continue to remain standing? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to sit? Yes, Marilyn, please.
Hello, it's an honor to pray. I would like to pray for the City of Danone and its city council. Heavenly Father, thank you for you, for your mercy, for your grace, for your forgiveness and your blessing. Thank you, Father, that you love us all perfectly and abundantly, whether we choose to believe in you or not. I thank you for giving these men and women the desires of their heart to be here tonight in these jobs, these awesome jobs, that they can make decisions to bless others and to do their jobs with integrity and honor. I pray that you bless them abundantly so that they can talk about all the things that they have on the agenda and that they will make decisions wisely. I pray for their families, that you bless them, Lord, plenty, in Jesus' name, amen.
All right, please be seated. Ms. Odom, we are ready for roll call.
Mayor White.
President.
Vice Mayor Henshaw.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Councilwoman Kenny.
Here.
Councilwoman Cogge. Troy's Library Public Works.
Here.
Jan Smith Finance Department.
Here.
Georgina Sid, Community Development.
Yeah.
Julie Danowski, Clark's Office. Chief McQuaid.
Here.
Lieutenant Yox.
He's here.
Voice is strange. And we also have Teresa Moberg, Community Development.
Here.
Jeanette Reber, Community Development.
Here.
Attorney Hand.
I'm here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website, City Hall Bulletin Board on Thursday, October 7th, 2021.
Very good, thanking Ms. Odom. The city council welcomes everyone this evening. Thank you for coming. A few things that will help the meeting go a little bit smoother. If you would like to speak this evening, please sign up in the lobby. Those that sign up will be asked, allowed to speak first. If you haven't signed up and you decide later, before we close out the public comment, you will be offered an opportunity to get up and speak. Council asks that you limit your presentation or speech to the council to three minutes. Those of you that are signed up for a presentation, we ask you limit it to 10 minutes. When you come up to the podium, please speak into the microphone. It is being recorded and it is being transcribed. We also have people listening in on Zoom, so it's very important that you speak clearly into the microphone for all to hear. It's also a very good time right now to check your cell phones. And if any of them are on the ring mode, it's a good time to turn them off. So with that said, we will, we will start. One thing about speaking, when we start the meeting, you will have an opportunity to speak on non-agenda items. And then if there's something on the agenda you want to speak to, if it's on the agenda, you have to wait till we come to that item on the agenda to speak to it. So the first go around, when you have an opportunity to speak, will be mostly on non-agenda items. We will go through that for those of you that may not be familiar with the process. We'll do our best to let you know how it's going. So the very first thing, council, are there any comments regarding the agenda? Does anyone on council have any comment on the published agenda? Please note, no comments. This is the opportunity now for the public, anyone who has signed up to speak on anything that's not on the agenda. What this means, any topic that you want to bring to council's attention. This is an opportunity, whether it's new business, old business, something you want to remind us about. This is an opportunity to speak. Ms. Odom, do we have anybody who has signed up to speak?
Yes, sir, Chris Anderson.
Welcome, Mr. Anderson, name and address.
Chris Anderson, 11463 North Williams Street. Just here to speak a little bit about Blue Run Park ordinance. We are against proposed ordinance for Blue Run Park drafted in its current form with an outright prohibition on what the city considers to be commercial use as it pertains to private shuttle use, which has historically occurred at Blue Run Park and recognized as an exception under Resolution 2015-11. One of the main topics of discussion concerning Blue Run Park is what is considered commercial use, which is an attempt to be an overly broad catch-all phrase that has not been properly defined in the approved management plan. But the management plan does state that shuttle use has historically occurred and would continue, not that shuttles would only be provided by governmental entities. The term now gets thrown around as a disallowable activity, which is not the case. If in fact such use was to be considered commercial, commercial use, which is not, then it would have to be approved by the city in FCT in writing. Because it is not considered commercial use, no further written approval is necessary. Thirteen years later, after the inception of the park, local ecotours and providers have been utilizing the only publicly defined exit point for tubers kayakers since the inception of Blue Run Park, even before, while under private ownership. As stated many times in various documents on record, and now the city is attempting to restrict or prohibit such uses with their own defined terms and ordinance that was supposed to be created within one year of ownership, not 13 years later, in 10 years plus after a local brick and mortar ecotours and providers having good faith relied upon the continued historical customary recreational use and after making significant capital investments. As stated in the original grant application, FCT, it states that "The loss of this amenity would be a significant impediment to the recreational use of Rainbow River, both for the local community as well as for the ecotourism associated with the river." That was in the original grant application I've submitted. Furthermore, City of Danone has reached out to DEP for their determination of clarification on private shuttle use being considered a disallowable activity. As stated in the email sent to Andrew Hand by Attorney Batson, this council needs to be brought up to speed that DEP has already clarified and made the determination on behalf of the city's and Attorney Hand's request that this is not considered a disallowable activity with no further action or discussion necessary if not deemed disallowable, as stated by Dawn Bound in her email correspondence with FCT. But I think we need to take another look, readdress our commercial use definition as private shuttle use is not considered a disallowable activity. Therefore, it is not considered commercial use with no revenues being collected for the direct use of the project site and no revenues being reported by the city on the annual revenue reporting form due to FCT, which is consistent with the original grant application and approved management plan. The governing documents of the park do not mention anything along the lines of revenues being collected off-site, which are mentioned in the new ordinance, but solely revenues collected from activities for the direct use of the project site would be subject to commercial use and maybe deemed a disallowable activity subject to a private use test determination reported to IRS guidelines. Nothing more, nothing less. Just finishing up right here. This ordinance is unduly restrictive and just contrary to the legislative intent for the awarded grant contract, which is supposed to enhance public access to direct water dependent facilities for outdoor based recreation as an alternative to development and not further restrict public access. Private sector plays a big part of the state, Florida stores and goal to provide and promote outdoor based recreation to meet the public's demand, which is laid out under the state's adopted score plan. Blue Run Park has been defined as the only publicly available designated tuber takeout for Rainbow River. You know, and if the ordinance is enforcing its current form, and we have no other viable option, we will utilize all other remedies available to help us.
Thank you very much.
Let's be talking.
Is there anyone else that has signed up?
Kathy Dunn.
Ms. Dunn, here's your opportunity, welcome.
Kathy Dunn, 11386 Hendrix Drive. I would like to speak out against proceeding to buy a piece of property for an equal station, especially in light of the fact that the church that we bought a year or two ago has not been sold and in light of the fact that we remain $2.5 million in debt. The other thing is, buying a piece of property for a police station in a residential area would be a very bad thing. If we do need to do this, I would say consider something on 41, buying one of the blighted buildings that nobody wants to buy and put it there. That would, that would remove some height. Also, I'd like to talk about reestablishing the CRA board. As I have talked with citizens that used to be on it, they said there was, they got tired of trying to apply for the grants and doing all the paperwork and being turned down. And I think it, since then, we need, it has just been city council and staff. And I think we need to reestablish the CRA board. We need to have transparency and treasurer's reports at the beginning of every meeting so we know where the money has gone, how much money we have. The other thing is, I would like to know who I could call to install a speed limit monitor on 41 that flashes and lets us know how fast we are going. I have not talked to one citizen or business person in town that doesn't think people are exceeding the speed limit terribly. And it's a detriment to our business and commercial and our pedestrians. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Ms. Odom, anyone else signed up?
No.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that didn't sign up that now would still like to speak on something outside the agenda? Yes, Mr. Jones. Name and address.
Yeah, our Jones, 13163, from that away. I'd just like to make a few comments to council. Listening to the other two speakers, I think they made some good points. I lived in Christopher River for quite a while. At Hunter Springs Park, we had a tremendous amount of commercial kayak rental companies using that park for a while. And it's good businesses in the city. It's a way for a small business to grow. And the city of Christopher River was very careful not to just toss them out. Say, no, you can't use the park. It did get so crowded that they moved them now down to Kings Bay Park. So, I mean, but they still made sure they took care of their business people in the city. So I would just, council, think of that. And then on the police station, good point. The other month when I was here for city council, all of a sudden there was 300,000 here and 300,000 over there. It's like, well, we need just $10,000 to fix some of the culverts down along the river. So I think it's very important that we fix some of the drainage system. From that away, those culverts are still collapsing, hasn't been fixed. It's really not going to take that much money compared to $300,000 here or there for something else. So just leave it in your hands. I'm sure you're very smart and can go over all the different options and stuff. But yeah, that's about it. I could say, carry on. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Jones. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to something that is not coming up on the agenda? Okay, let's note that the public has had its opportunity to speak and has. Now we're moving on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is the first eight items on the agenda. These are items that council has spoken to on the workshop. And we've had a consensus of agreement on these items. So what will happen after you've had an opportunity to speak to these eight? Council will make a motion to accept all eight as a bundle. First one is the council minutes. The second one is the emergency repairs for Riverview Drive. The third item is to give a letter to the county saying we support the Pennsylvania project in the bridge over the Rainbow River. The fourth one is to support the bike trail that's coming through Danone. The fifth one is to give a letter of support to a business that is trying to bring in a hospice into Danone. The sixth one is to sign a contract to grade Danone Heights. Seventh one is to provide training for code enforcement and permitting. We have new people on staff that need that. And the eighth one is basically a a opportunity for us to have the Two Rivers Music Festival and hours at 5:00 and 10:00 PM, the evening of the festival, to serve and consume alcoholic beverages. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to anything on the consent agenda? Please note that no one, audience has had an opportunity and has not spoke. Do we have a motion by council to approve? We have a motion by Vice Mayor Henshaw.
Second.
Second by Ms. Kenny. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Please take note that the consent agenda passes unanimously. Now, if you're following along, we're on the regular agenda. We're at item number nine right now, which is a special presentation. So, Mandy, you want to lead us into the special presentation?
Yes, sir. As we all know, Teresa Moberg will be leaving at the end of the month. So we wanted to take this opportunity for the city council to be able to express their appreciation to her and staff. And if you would like to come down, mayor.
All right, this is consent to Teresa Moberg. In recognition of your 14 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Danone, you are hereby commended for your exemplary service throughout your multiple roles within the public works and community development departments. Heartfelt gratitude, pride and appreciation. We wish you much success in your future endeavors. City of Danone, City Council, presented this day, the 11th of October, 2021. While we hate you, we appreciate you. So everybody give her a hand.
Oh, we want to see. I don't know if we buy you.
It's this. You are timeless.
Oh.
I'm not going to sit down yet because real quick, I just need to thank my husband for everything he does for me. He has done, especially in the last nine months. And my mom's here.
Oh. Yay, mom.
And I'd like to bring my mom in. Can y'all come up for a picture?
Oh, so sweet.
Can I get a picture with council too?
Oh, that's great.
Today, Teresa's been worrying that she didn't have other than work clothes, so we got her this. Too late.
Well, I can tell y'all Teresa has, she has made the city such a better place to work and live. And there's never a time when you can't pick up the phone and call her and she knows the information. Almost immediately, if she doesn't, she gets back to you in, what, 30 minutes? Seconds. Wow. Even, even it's days when we had to look and go, hey, can you tell me what, the road right there? What, you know, was that permit done, seven different times? And that was back in the days when she had to flip the pages from years on by and away. Second, she would have the answer for you. Never, she always has great, her service and, I mean, you know. She had a great mom and a great mother. Wish you luck in Mississippi. Thank you. I want to, I wish you, because that's, we had a wonderful time. That's one thing. All of you, you know, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. I'm going to miss your smiling face. You're always so professional.
I'll send you a picture. And Teresa.
Really good night. I need to see you go all this long, but at some point, that's what they say.
Oh.
You're so pretty.
Last, last, she's run that department on her, I mean, I know. Extra staff help. Nine months. I had a baby. They've got big shoes to fill.
Thank you, Lord. Praise God for who all this is.
Amen.
That's funny, Mandy.
Jeez.
I hate to see her go, but we're happy to have Jeanette. One.
Okay.
That's Jeanette in the pink. Yes, ma'am.
Jeanette.
I don't know.
Stop.
Okay.
I'm sure she's in the room where your mommy's so gracious.
She is.
Okay.
Nicely.
Before we move to the next item, which will be number 10, I would like to add another thing about Teresa. Those of you that have followed the city closely know that our Community Development Director resigned, I believe, last January. So this city has been functioning without a Community Development Director Planner for seven months.
Nine.
Nine months, my God. And Teresa has actually been doing double duty for nine months while the city has searched for Gianna, who left just recently. Now, what Teresa's doing, she is training both Jeanette and Gianna before she leaves. She and. I knew that would get me. George. I knew that would get me. I said it right all day today. So not only has she stepped up admirably and kept the boat floating with a lot of activity that's going on in the city right now for this all to be coming Teresa's way and for her to deal with it for nine months was amazing. I know it had to be incredibly stressful. I know how you approach your work. You take it seriously. You want to do it right. And when it was coming at you hot and heavy, I know that had to have been a real burden for you to carry. And I'll always remember that, this council, just coming on board, knowing that you were a key component that was keeping the glue together. I'll always remember that. Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you, mayor, very much, and thank you, council. And especially for the wonderful, brilliant staff.
You never say it's not my job. Never say it's not my job. Makes you more market for that.
When is your last day? When is your last? 31st.
You want to stay through the 31st? I don't mind. That means she'll be working through the weekend.
Now you can do some more traveling.
Okay, let's, let's move on. That was a wonderful feel-good moment that we all really enjoyed. So we're now on item number 10, the presentation of the Florida Main Street Program. Catherine Beck, Florida Main Street Coordinator. She is going to come up and give us a presentation. Catherine, welcome to Danone. Thank you for coming.
That's a hard presentation to follow. Yeah, I know. But good evening. My name is Catherine Beck. I am with the Florida Department of State. I am the statewide coordinator for Florida Main Street.
Hold on. Hold on. Chief, chief. Chief, have everybody go outside. Hold on, we want to hear what you have to say.
That's perfect. So I'm Catherine Beck. I am the Florida Main Street Coordinator for the Florida Department of State. I do want to tell you, I was here three years ago as part of the community assessment that was performed by DEO. So thank you for having me back again to reintroduce you to Florida Main Street. And who is controlling slides for me? Okay, if you could start, and I'm going to try and get through quickly. We're going to talk through a lot of these slides. The presentation will be left for you. I'm more than happy to answer questions. Okay, so Main Street is economic development within the context of historic preservation. That is always the question we get. What is Main Street? Main Street is economic development. That's what we did. Next slide, please. So this is just a quick rundown on the statute that governs us. What we do, we are advocates. We encourage design and planning within your district. We help you create a sense of place that will bring people to your community. Next slide, please. My favorite quote by Ed McMahon. "People stay longer and spend more money in places that attract our attention. No place in America stays special by accident." You have to work to maintain that sense of place. Next slide, please. And currently, we have 50, Main Street, actually 51. Monticello reorganized their community and came back in as of last week. We have three applications pending for this year. So that decision will be made on October 22nd as to whether any or all of those three communities are also accepted into the programs. I'm also currently working with three other programs who are reinstituting Main Streets. Next slide, please. Why is your downtown important? This is the question, and this is what you, as a council, deal with every single day and what your community is dealing with, particularly now coming through times of COVID. COVID has taught us some lessons that we never thought we would have to learn. So your downtown is important because it is a major employer. Those small businesses employ your community. It's your infrastructure. It's your infrastructure. You have already made a huge commitment in terms of dollars into your downtown and infrastructure. You want to maintain that. You want to utilize it to its fullest capacity. It has an impact on your property values, not just your commercial values, but also your residential values. It's your heart. The downtown is the heartbeat of a community, and you will hear that from us every time we speak to you. The downtown is what keeps your community alive. And it is important to have a public space where people can gather, where they can discuss, when they can look at a community and determine what the vision is and help the community accelerate and reach that vision. Next slide, please. Downtown is the home of independent and small businesses. Again, downtown is your community. This is where your community works. Next slide, please. Every year, $12.5 million go to local governments in property taxes from downtowns. It's a huge investment. Next slide, please. The cost to an empty storefront, and Georgie was kind enough to take me through, and we saw several. And as I'm giving you these numbers, I want you to attach this to every one of those empty storefronts that we looked at on 27 and 40. Hit the slide, please. Total $400,000 per empty storefront. Now, how do we get at that number? Hit the slide, please. Lost sales, lost payroll, lost rents, lost business profit, property taxes, bank deposits, real estate loans, sales tax, utilities, and advertising. $400,000. That's a huge loss to any community. Those numbers as of 2017, the numbers were done by Donald Ripton, Place Economics. Next slide, please. So what does a big box do for your community? Everybody gets excited. Target's coming in, Walmart's coming in. It's gotta bring jobs. Let's look at what that means. Walmart, this is an actual case study. This is Thomasville Road, Walmart in Tallahassee, Florida, land consumed, 34 acres. As opposed to a commercial downtown building, one acre. Total property taxes per acre, 6,500. In your downtown corridor, that number is $335,000 per acre. Rental tax, 47.5 for Walmart, or retail tax, 47.5 for Walmart, 83.6 in that downtown one acre. Residents per acre, none. And your downtown, downtown state average is 48. And how many jobs does Walmart bring for that per acre? 5.3. Your downtown has an average of 26.5 jobs per acre. So when you say why is downtown important, these numbers justify why downtown is important. Next slide, please. You can hit it again, please. So Main Street is historic preservation. It is economic development. It is commercial development. It is all-inclusive, and it is a public-private partnership. It is your grassroots and community-driven. And those last two are key. Without a strong public-private partnership, your Main Street will not do well. Without community support, if it is not a community-driven Main Street, it will fail. Main Street transfers concepts to your entire community. Next slide, please. We use a Main Street approach. It is a four-point model. It is design, organization, promotion, and economic vitality. By combining the tenants of these four concepts, you can create the transformation strategy for your corridor. Next slide, please. Return on investments in a local Main Street, $38 to every $1 invested. Next slide, please. Some of the items that you can apply for as Main Streets through Florida DHR are grants. We call these small matching grants. Main Streets do not have to meet the match. That's up to $50,000 per grant. These are some of the classification areas that you can utilize. When you pair a Main Street within a CRA, it helps you accomplish a lot of the design guidelines that your CRA is putting into their five, 10, 20-year plan. Next slide, please. This is again, you know, additional arenas in which you can apply for grants. We have been incorporated in Florida since 1985. Next slide, please. Total reinvestments, and this is as of July 1, 2021. We have $4.69 billion in our Main Street corridors. Net gain in jobs. Hit it again, please. 28,771 net gain in businesses, 77.69. And volunteer hours per community is 1.4 million volunteer hours in our communities. Now, the interesting thing is, last year, our numbers were not as good as 2019's numbers. But every one of our Main Streets was net positive for new jobs, new businesses, and public-private infrastructure commitments. So even though our numbers were not as good, we were still net positive. There are not a lot of commercial districts that were not Main Streets nationwide that can make that claim. And that is consistent nationally for our Main Street districts. Next slide, please. If you decide to reorganize, there are certain requirements that you would need to meet. This is just the structure that tells you what steps you need to go through. It's actually fairly simple, but there does need to be a commitment made to the program. Next slide, please. Proposed funding model from National Main Street is a third, a third, a third. That comes from a third government, a third private, and a third miscellaneous, which generally translates to sponsorships, grants, that type of thing. Next slide. Some of the do's and don'ts, that'll be the next slide that comes up. You do want to create public-private partnerships, and you do want to change attitudes about your downtown. You want people coming to downtown. They need to have a reason to come. Next one, please. Don't overemphasize your parking, and I saw you have some great new parking facilities. So you've already accomplished some of what you needed to do in terms of providing area for people to park. You know, don't get caught with the white elephant. Don't study your downtown to death. You know your community, you know what's needed here. You can take those steps one at a time. Don't let traffic generators move out of your downtown. And don't expect 100% cooperation from your businesses and property owners within your Main Street district. And don't look for the home runs. We encourage communities to set out a plan that takes small steps first. Have those small accomplishments. Let the community see what you are doing. That overall long-term vision is wonderful, is what you want, it's where you want to go. But you want to show the community that you are working from day one, and the way to do that is to accomplish small things. And then next slide, please. Any questions or answers, or questions I can answer?
Um, we were a Main Street. Do you remember the date by chance?
I think that 2006 was your last year.
Okay, because I remember I was on a board. I think I was on the city council at one time, and then I know I was on the Main Street Board when I got off of city council. So I was just trying to remember where I was, how young I was. But, and what kind of, and I saw that one of the slides, it said something that we had to have a paid executive director. Is that Georgina?
In this particular model, as the CRA, yes, Georgina would act as that executive director.
I was just making sure we weren't having to hire somebody else. And I thought it was you, sorry.
That was my first question.
Okay. And what kind of match would the city need to pay? Is there, in order for us to become Main Street again, is there an amount that we have to pay? It's not correct?
No.
Okay, I was just making sure.
The only thing that you would have to do is to renew your membership with National Main Street, which is like $375.
A year?
A year.
Okay. It was great when we had it here before, and it just kind of. Communities.
Main Streets are work. Main Streets are work. It is not a resume-building board.
I remember that.
And the question I would have for you, I found it kind of curious because it is a topic we talk about often, is parking. So you said, don't emphasize parking. Actually, parking is something that the city actually does emphasize, trying to create more parking opportunities for the businesses that we have. So I'm just curious, with the statement, just a general statement, don't overemphasize parking.
Because everyone always says, I go downtown, but there's no place to park. Well, there is a place to park. It may be down the street. It may not be in front of that business. And so you have to get your community back into the pedestrian mindset, that you're gonna walk. You know, yeah, I mean, and your parking is great. Like I said, I saw those new, the new areas that you put in over by the park. But still, to come to that heart of your downtown, to come to your four corners, that's a block and a half walk easy, okay? People have to walk. They're not gonna be able to park right in front of their favorite store every time they want to do that. So, and that is the problem that commissions deal with. You know, they try to address that issue through putting more parking in. It's your community walking, but you have to make it accessible, which is what Main Street does through their, through their design guidelines that they start developing. You want to make that community walkable. Make it easy for people to walk, or make it easy to do drop-off and somebody park and walk back. You know, those are the things you have to look at and conceptualize. Your area would be fairly easy to walk. It's not too spread out, you know, 41 is a little bit of an issue. You need to look at some of that. But we all deal with that, where we have, you know, she come through and widen those arenas, right? And so making the sidewalks more accessible and friendly to your community are gonna allow people to walk.
I get it. If you go to any big city, walking two or three blocks is expected and normal. No one thinks a thing about it. But in Florida, the idea you're gonna park somewhere and have to walk two or three blocks, oh my God. You know. It truly is a mindset. And I get it. I know what you're saying. Any other questions, comments?
Well, I'll make a comment here. I definitely am very happy to see you here. Your presentation, I thought, was really on target, and the fact that you are going to be working with the city and with Georgiana would be critical in terms of our planning and our needs. When I first came, retired, and was involved with Main Street, I was secretary for a while. And that was quite divided in terms of its concept from what you explained. It was not in conjunction with the city, but it did have a mass amount of volunteers. And those volunteers are here today. And it gives them a chance, not only to volunteer, but to be a part of the city dialogue, and I greatly appreciate you being here.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Look forward to it.
I have a question. I'm Jan Covage. I've watched Inverness develop their downtown area, and it's just phenomenal. And have walked around their shops, their cafes, delis, they got a theater there. I mean, I would love to see Dan Ellen begin to evolve those more evening-active places to go, more places to eat, more outward, outside dining, more music entertainment on a regular basis to draw people from a larger radius around our town. And I would like to know, what is the Department, Florida Department of State, doing to try to encourage entrepreneurs from up north? Because we know there's certain economic depressed areas up there. Perhaps people are starting to move further south than Atlanta. What's the Florida Department of State doing to let the other people up north know that there's economic opportunities down here?
That actually is not the Department of State. That is Department of Economic Opportunity.
Right.
And they actually have some very strong campaigns that are running, and they have some business grants and loans and everything that are available right now. So DEO is doing a pretty hard push to bring resources down into this area.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. What are our next steps to try and, this is something that we want, what do we need to do?
That's a good question.
That's why I asked.
The good question is, a good presentation is only a good presentation. It's what do you do with it when the presentation, what, right? So what can, what can the city do in the short term and the long term to capitalize on what you're?
Well, since your intention is to run it through your CRA, I would guess that it has to go before your CRA board and then your commission for approval in terms of venturing out into a Main Street environment. I would think it's administrative on your side. After that, it's actually fairly simple to reactivate. Because you were a Main Street, you no longer have to come back into that competitive process. You can just reactivate. It takes reorganizing, it takes coming back in with a vision and a mission statement. It takes having an executive director in place, renewing your membership with National. And so those are fairly simple for you through a CRA process. And so I say, I like that CRA model. Instead of making that Main Street stand on its own as a 501(c)(3), it's very difficult for Main Streets to get the funding that they need to do, the work they need to do without that city partnership. With a CRA, you have direction, because you already have done some vision planning and designing within that corridor of the CRA. So your Main Street then is gonna help you implement some of those actions. So it really is administrative at your level to have the motion, decide that, yes, you do want to reinstitute your Main Street program, and then if it is your will, to have that happen. And how long is that possible?
Yes, so Mandy, would this be something that Georgiana would be put on the lead? Lead on this would be kind of her, to try to take off with it. Okay. Okay, Ms. Kenny?
Well, I just wondered what, how long the process to get started typically is.
It depends on how quickly you get that information together. Because once we receive it, then it's an automatic. I received Monticello's Thursday at 3:00, by Thursday at 5:00, they were part of the Florida Main Street program.
Oh, we. So let me just, I'm gonna ask a housekeeping question if you have one, Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm gonna ask a question.
Okay, sure.
Okay, sure. Mandy, so when could we do a CRA meeting? Not a special meeting, just a regular, can we do another CRA meeting on our next city council meeting?
Regular scheduled CRA meeting is at 5:00 prior to your council meeting in November.
Of November, okay, so the 8th. Okay.
That's good news. We have one scheduled for November, right?
That would be excellent.
Well, you know, and I am available if you would like to. Georgie has my contact information. Any questions or concerns that you have, please reach out to me. I would love to have Dan Ellen back into the Florida Main Street family. I think that the program and the model will help you with what you want to do. And I would tell you to look at Crystal River. You mentioned Inverness. I would go to Crystal River and look at that. And five years ago, they had almost an 85% vacancy rate. And this program has turned that community around. Now, it's not just a program. It was in cooperation with their city council. And, you know, the mayor will tell you how important that relationship has been for the success that they have had.
Excellent.
Something to look forward to. Just to add to that, the reorganization of this program, CRA already has most of the structure of it. So we would be able to get it together pretty fairly rapidly.
Wonderful. Well, we appreciate, good one for your first presentation, Ms. Georgiana.
Please let me know if I can help you in any way.
Thank you. Safe travels now.
Ms. Beck, thank you so much. We appreciate it. All right, we're moving on to item number 11. Dan Ellen Chamber and Business Association requests for assistance with the tourism website. Do we have any public comment on item number 11?
Maybe any questions?
Well, if anyone has any comment. Well, if, uh, if anyone has any comment on it, or if you want to speak, go ahead, come on up and tell us about it. Tell us what we need to know.
I'm Julie with the Dan Ellen Chamber and Business Association. No longer the director, but I am consulting with them. And I, um, oh, Julie Manzini, I don't think I'll put my last name in there. So, um, we have a, a website that is dedicated to our members. And there's a member directory.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Please, we can hear this, we can hear the talking. Sorry, go ahead.
But we did a lot of research, and most of the tourism websites are actually run by cities. However, we know that you have a very small staff here at the city. And we would like to, um, help develop a tourism website. But we need help. And I, I know that this was started by Jeff and, and, and Jan Covage. And, um, I spoke with Jan the other day, and already I've probably visited all of the agritourism facilities and taken photos that can be used on a website. So I've, I've probably visited most of the businesses that would be on a tourism website. So we probably already have a lot of the content. And I also have experience writing copy for websites. I do that occasionally on a consultant basis as well. So I think that, um, this is something that we could do if we had your cooperation.
And it looked like when I was just looking at the, the screen from Main Street, there was even something about tourism website development assistance. So that might be like a twofer.
Right. It's all about cooperation.
Amen.
Yep.
Okay, if you, um, council, if you look at agenda number eleven, you, you can see there is a, a proposed motion. Is anyone willing to, uh, make that motion as printed?
I'm with the city council, adopt the following findings, proceed with the actions stated herein, deliver the following direction to the Dan Ellen Chamber and Business Association as printed on our agenda.
Do we have a second? Okay, Councilman, Councilwoman, Williams, second. Now at this time, uh, Ms. Odom, do you read this, Odom?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Couple weeks ago, a gentleman came in and submitted, tried, attempted to submit an invoice to the city for this project. Would we still receive an invoice, or is this just something where we would just issue a check and, and monitor? My, my assumption, which I know assuming is not the best thing to do. Um, I assume that by in submitting, presenting us an invoice, that the website had already been created.
No, we have not done anything. But it does say here that we, if we are going to do this, that we are to provide you with an accounting of all expenditures. And so that would, you know, so I, I, from what I understand reading this, that you would give us the money and then we would show you receipts and, or an invoice or something to that.
So a check would be made table to the chamber?
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, Ms. Odom, at this time, do you read the remainder, the bottom paragraph?
Sure. The city council of the city of Dan Ellen hereby finds that the Dan Ellen Chamber and Business Association's efforts to implement and develop a website to promote tourism within the city limits of the city of Dan Ellen serves a paramount public purpose that is in the best interest of the citizens of Dan Ellen and furtherance of their health, safety, and welfare. City council will provide two thousand dollars to assist the chamber in its implementation and development of such website. The chamber must use these funds for these purposes only, return such funds to the city if not used accordingly. Return to the city any unused funds and provide the city with an accounting of all expenditures of these public funds.
Okay, thank you very much, council. We do have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any discussion on this? No discussion? Bring it to a vote. All in favor? opposed, passes unanimously. Congratulations. We're looking forward to see the finished product. Alright, well, we're on item number?
Thank you, Julie.
Twelve. Item number twelve is a resolution twenty twenty-one dash seventeen declaring city-owned property located at eleven eight zero eight North Ohio Street as surplus. This is the Soul Harbor Church and the lots that are with that. At this particular time, is there anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment on this? Okay, please note, there is no comment. So we have a promote, uh, proposed motion. Do we have anybody that would move resolution twenty twenty-one dash seventeen, be read by title only?
Done, move.
We need a second.
I'll second it.
Right. At this time, Mandy, do we, do we need a vote on that, or we just, okay? Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I think at this time, we don't have any other location for our police department. And until we have something that would be different, I don't think we should put this property on as surplus in case. Again, this is the most effective and we could start it almost immediately. But I still, I don't think putting this property on as surplus when we don't have any location is a, um, not a smart business move at this time.
Any other comment?
Is the building being used at all right now?
They won't use it, they won't let them use it.
Any other comments?
Yes, I'd like to comment. Um, this, this building's been vacant. This building's been vacant for how long now? Almost two, couple of years?
November.
Since November, well, since November. I think that if we put it on the market, some viable business will be established there rather quickly. The situation is right now, everything is moving in the way of distribution because of online ordering of items. And there are many, many companies out there that can't get the space even in Ocala right now. And because we are on a throughway, we are not that far from the interstate, we're not that far from nineteen. I think this property would move along rather quickly if put on the market for, for some, uh, practical use and therefore would, would add, um, a tax base to the city, jobs possibly. And so, and that money, of course, that we would obtain from the sale of that property would be invested into a new police station rather than pulling, or replenish money that we would take out of our general fund to build a new police station.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. To read this by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, it passes four to one. Now we have a proposed motion. Do we have anyone that will move resolution twenty twenty-one? Yes.
Has to read it.
Have to read it, okay, please, yes.
Resolution number RES twenty twenty-one dash seventeen, a resolution of the city council of Dan Ellen, Florida declaring property owned by the city, property ID number thirty-three eighty dash thirteen fifty-nine dash zero zero as surplus property. Providing for severability, providing for the repeal of completing resolutions, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Is there anyone on council that would like to move that resolution twenty twenty-one dash seventeen be approved?
Done, move.
Ms. Kenny, is there a second?
I'd second the motion.
Second. Any discussion?
I believe this is a good idea, but this time we have no place to put our police and we have no other location to put them. I don't think this is a sensible business decision.
Vice Mayor, I understand what you're saying, but apparently it's not gonna happen.
Doesn't matter, I can still do my principles and.
That's true, that's right.
Anyone else that would like to comment? We heard from Ms. Williamson, Vice Mayor.
I think we have, uh, studied this for a considerable period of time. We have heard from the public. We have, uh, done our due diligence and I believe we need to go forward.
I disagree.
Okay, alright, everybody has had their opportunities to, and respectfully, uh, give their opinion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Passes four to one. We go to, uh, item number thirteen. Number BID twenty twenty-one dash zero two, notice of intent to dispose of public property located at eleven eight zero eight North Ohio Street. Is there anyone in the audience or on Zoom that would like to make a comment? Okay, please, no, no one wants to make a comment?
Or, please oil her chair on tomorrow. I'm sorry. Her chair is squeaking.
Okay. At this time, Mandy, um, we go on with the proposal.
Well, this is what we talked about earlier today. I did reach out to each one of you with the idea that we may want to consider rezoning this property back to RVO before we list it, before we actually advertise. For a couple of different reasons, it opens up, um, other uses of the property rather than, um, the way it's on now as public. Uh, I did have a chance to talk with Andrew briefly before the meeting. And he said we do not have to do it. That if someone is interested in the use of the property other than the uses that are allowed under the public zoning, the, the property, whoever purchases the property could have something in their contract to say that it would be contingent upon the city approving a rezon to RVO. So it's strictly however council wants to proceed. Whether you want to, um, go ahead and do a city-initiated rezon before we list the property. Or if someone makes an offer on the property and wants to be able to do something that's outside of the public zoning, their contract could be contingent upon that successful rezoning.
So what you're suggesting, what has been discussed with staff and staff has contacted council is to rezone it back to what originally was zoned before we purchased it.
Yes.
And the purpose of this would be to open up the possibility of different clientele that might be interested in the property because it's not zoned specifically for the public use. So what this does, it increases the possibility that there could be multiple uses for the property, therefore there might be additional people interested. Correct?
Correct, because currently under public, just to give you an example, um, you can have a church, you could have a school, you could have a cemetery, things like that. Whereas under RVO, you could have a small business such as a beauty salon, an antique store, things along those lines that you see in the, uh, RVO district.
And it could still remain as a church too.
Be a church as well.
So it, it keeps the church with it and expands it to other things.
Yeah.
Well, that would seem to me, if we're trying to maximize the value of the property, because what the property sells for is going to be very important as it's applied to the police project, the more we can sell it for, the more money we have to apply to the police building project. It would seem to me just good business to expand the uses and try to increase some competition for the, uh, for the building. Vice Mayor?
I, um, reached out to a, um, commercial broker today to ask their opinion about this. Reluctantly, of course. And, um, stated that it really didn't matter if it stays public or not because a, uh, it will not affect the value of this church too. It will not affect the value of the building if it's still public or if it's RVO. Because somebody that will want to, and, and do a business is going and purchase it, is going to want to do the rezoning if they need it. If it's a church, they don't need to do the rezoning. So there's really, if, or, and, and it's a typical thing in a commercial situation where a business will come and nine times out of ten, they're going to have to go get a rezoning anyway for commercial business, unless it's like a McDonald's wanting to buy a old McDonald's building, I just made something up. So, um, really and truly at this, and you know, it's not gonna matter if we spend the next two months doing it or if somebody else pays us to have it being done, to have it rezoning. So it's, you know, to leave it public now and try and, um, sell it, it's, you're not gonna get any more money today than you would any other way. And, and it'll still take as long, so. That was a commercial.
Ms. Kenny?
Well, I would think that the process could be concurrent if we wanted to go ahead in order to, um, see, uh, what is actually out there on the market while at the same time, uh, checking with planning and seeing when it could be rezoned. Uh, because, because of, uh, Mr. Hand's statement, which we have both seen, Valerie and I, on many contracts, that it is the sale would be contingent upon getting the proper zoning. So.
So I'm, I'm putting my business hat on. I own that property and right now, the way the property is zoned, and I want to sell it. The only way, only customer I can sell it to is someone who wants it for a church. Someone who wants it for a school. Someone wants it for a cemetery. Something like that, right? Or I could, or owning the bus, owning that property and wanting to sell it to maximize my proper, uh, my possibility of getting top dollar. I could keep that church, school, cemetery. But I could also include selling it for small business, beauty salon, maybe a gymnasium. Maybe divide the building up into multiple businesses with a coffee shop or anything. So it seemed like if I owned that property and I approached the city and I said, I want to change the zoning, if the city would change that zoning, it would seem to me like it totally expands the, the possible, possibilities that I could sell it to someone other than church or school or something like that. You would, you all, you would have that market already and you would expand it. So, uh, if I owned that property, I'd be excited if, if I could get that rezoned that included these other possibilities. Why, why would we keep it in this real narrow thing and put the, uh, the weight on the possible buyer that you would have to change the zoning after you bought it? If it's already changed, it just makes it very, very attractive.
Yeah, so, it's okay if I comment?
Sure.
Yeah, I think, um, I think it's pretty much general business and going to what Valerie had mentioned, which her conversation with a commercial broker is that when the property is offered, you would include in the advertising potential for rezoning. I mean, I think that's done like every day when a property with potential for a rezon is done. So I think, I, I believe you should go ahead and start marketing this property and include in the advertising potential for rezoning. And because the city is selling it, I think they would believe it, you know? They would think our intentions are genuine for offering rezoning.
We are government.
Yeah, we are.
Right.
Well, the question becomes, Andrew, can we put it out there for sale? As, like Ms. Kenny said, concurrently as we're trying to change the zoning?
You can put it out there for sale. I mean, you could, uh, start the process and, and do both at the same time. Or you could do one or the other first. That's up to you. What's not allowed is contract zoning, that's different than having a contingency in a contract for it, so you couldn't enter into an agreement with a prospective purchaser and guarantee them that they would have a certain zoning. That would be problematic. But, uh, having the sale contingent upon a particular rezoning would work. And there's only, uh, certain zonings that would be allowed in that area, uh, given that they would have to be, uh, consistent, of course, with the comprehensive plan and, and the community.
And, and we're just returning it back to the zoning it was before we purchased it.
Right. I, I haven't looked at a map in some time of that area. Right. I I haven't looked at a map in some time of that area, but in speaking with Mandy would appear that all of that area and everything around it is RBO. So logically, that is the, you know, correct zoning.
It's not like we're having to go to the county and beg our plea for consideration. This is the city rezoning. Piece of property that we own.
Correct.
So it's not like we have to get on our hands and knees and hope that the county gives us some sort of consideration. We're kind of. Taking care of a piece of property that we.
Right, the county is not involved in this process at all.
So it's I would. I would say it's a pretty strong bet that we'll be able to rezone it ourselves, wouldn't you say?
Well, the city has absolute ability to rezone and do rezonings, you know.
Just be a matter of a little extra legwork and paperwork and and some time to to do that. It's not like.
It would be a minimum of three meetings you'd have at a very minimum, a one single planning commission meeting to review the comprehensive plan consistency. Of. Whatever zoning is proposed and presumably RBO. And then it could come before council once that consistency is found for first reading and then second reading.
Okay, so one last question, so I have clarity. If we wanted to put it on the market as it currently is zoned. Because we're time is of the essence. We're trying to get this done because we need we need the sale of this property so we can possibly go forward. So if we put it on the market as it's currently zoned. Can we also be working on it? Within our own processes to get it rezoned? After after we've advertised it the way it is?
Yes.
So there's no downside?
We own the property.
So there's no downside. You can put it on, you can put it like you said, Ms. Covitch, exactly the way it is as we're trying to rezon it.
Potential for rezoning.
Right.
Now, what you what you see here is the actual ad that has been sent to the paper. Contingent upon you guys approving this tonight. We had to get it in early to meet the Riverland News deadline of this Thursday. So if this goes through tonight, if you tell us that you want to go ahead and advertise, this is what it's going to look like. And it's going to say zone public. Is that okay, Andrew, that it's advertised that way and then we're going to go through a process to rezon it after it's been advertised?
Absolutely, because they're independent of each other. Right now, that's exactly accurate and that will be exactly accurate for at least, you know, that period of time that it takes to rezon it. It is public and it will remain public until that second reading. And adoption.
Well, would it also, would it also be possible to call the newspaper and ask them to amend that to also include? The possibility of rezoning will be. However, you want to do it with your legalese.
Yes, I mean, has it been printed?
It can't. The only thing I can do at this point is retract it. I can't make any changes at this point.
They won't let you add a word. You too.
Just keep in mind, Ms. Kenny, councilists told us we're good this way.
That's right. That's right. That's fine.
One thing too, with with the. You have a parcel here that wasn't. Procured for redevelopment purposes. Nonetheless, it's in the CRA, so you have to go through this process. If it were procured for redevelopment, you would have to go through, you know, some additional steps. The point being is that anybody who's going to have to purchase or would be interested in purchasing this prop this property. Is going to have to contact City Hall to to get a hold of those materials. And I think it says at the bottom there, submit to City Hall. And further information may be obtained at the city of City of Denellon Community Redevelopment Office. So they're going to have to. Obtain those, you know, any information to submit the proposal at that point in time that can be communicated to them if they're interested.
And we could amend the the publishing on the website. We could, because we wouldn't publish this until it was approved by you tonight. So we our plans would be to put it on the website tomorrow and if we want us to include some sort of language. Saying that it could be rezoned, we can do that on the website.
One thing too, Mandy, I suppose, how how far ahead of time does it need to go into the paper for publication?
Well, based on the schedule, it's fifteen days. It's thirty days from Thursday.
Well, what I mean is when is it scheduled? When would this be scheduled to to be put in the paper?
Thursday.
Thursday.
This week.
And could it go in the paper for next week if this were retracted and then modified?
We could. It's we could, but it's going to change the schedule that which is fine. But I haven't actually pulled it yet and hopefully I still can.
We just leave it like it is?
If it goes like this in Thursday's paper, we can advertise it again in next Thursday. With any, you know, modifications that you want. It doesn't say we can't advertise it a second time. It's just I'm counting with that November fifteenth date, I'm accounting thirty days from Thursday.
Ms. Kenny?
This is kind of a real estate question and it's been a long time. I rely on Valerie to help me here.
Oh, Lord.
If two sellers came or two buyers came in at the same time. And one buyer wanted it, for example, a church and the other buyer wanted it for. RBO kind of purpose. The first person who makes the offer, even if the second offer is. Is more appealing in terms of a tax base and other things that we might be interested in. We are, aren't we?
But no, you can you can take the fifth and and this is a close, this is a bid process anyway, so no.
Technically, no, it's not a bid process.
Oh, sorry.
It's 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 up there and it says bid and that's how staff has written it up in the past. But it's not a bid process in that you have to take the highest and best offer. You simply have to review all the offers and then you can make your decision based upon that because it's contemplated. We're we're going through a process here that's really not designed for this current situation. Again, this is designed for things procured for or parcels procured for redevelopment. And if you're going through that process, you can't sell it, for instance, for under market value unless you make certain determinations, you do it. This is not redevelopment property. But just because of where it's located, you have to go through it. It's not a bidding process. You just have to receive. You know, if someone makes an application, you have to review it, compare it against the others and then ultimately decide what.
You don't have to take the first.
Yeah, and and Miss Kenny, right now, let me just tell you, we've had it where we've had. Twenty-six offers at one time. And you just present them all at the same time and you can pick whichever one you want.
Wow, that's great. I wasn't not sure. That helps.
And and the one thing to keep in mind by opening up as we're discussing. If it happened to be bought. By someone. With a commercial purpose, you have now put that back on the tax rolls for the first time probably ever. So that property, big piece of property like that would be on the tax rolls rather than a tax-free property.
Aye.
So to to make the entities out there compete against each other, whether it's a church-based group. Or a business to compete. And push that price to its most highest level through competition. The only one that wins on that is the city. If we get if we get our top top bid because there's some competition for it, we we win. Yes.
Question, do we have to have a minimum?
If I don't want to look at bids that are under what we pay for plus our expenses.
You have to consider all, you know, you you can establish your minimum once you have all the proposals in and so so here's.
Okay, we don't.
Right, you just have to take it. You have to look at all the proposals. You can reject them all. If you have, let's say you have an offer for ten million dollars, you have an offer for six hundred thousand dollars and the. The value of the property is six hundred thousand dollars. You can take the six hundred thousand dollar one and reject the ten million if that's what you wanted to do.
There's not a price.
So, right, and if you can and as soon as, you know, if you didn't like either one of those because you don't like what they propose to do with the property. Then you can turn them both down and go right back out and put it out again.
Okay, yeah, you you made me think of a question then. So what do they have to tell us what they're going to do? Because usually if you're buying a piece of property, except for the fact that it has to fit within the zoning, of course, like we've already discussed. They're not obligated to tell me it's going to be a beauty shop or it's going to be a brothel.
They're not obligated to, no, but but again, sometimes, sometimes when this happens, city already has a use that they that they want and they might say, hey, we envision this.
But we have that, I mean, and I guess I'm looking at it because I'm the realtor and I can't tell people what to do with what they're going to do with their homes or their properties. As a seller, you know, so but as us as a sellers, we can say, no, we don't want. A beauty shop there. We want a pizza pub.
You can make those considerations, yeah.
Okay, I don't know if we can do that.
In this case.
Okay.
No, we're still spending money on it. Oh, yeah, babe.
It's crazy.
Okay, Ms. Odom, we've discussed this for a while, so I don't know where we were. Do we have a motion in a second on it? Are we into discussion right now?
So we're going to go ahead as is with the bid as planned.
That's what.
Advertise as public. And we can amend it. On the website to make a a note that the rezon is. Possible, possible. And we can advertise again.
When would we? How would we initiate the process of having it rezoned? That should be. Need a direction tonight.
Go through planning. And we go through planning.
Through council tonight directing it to go to, it would have to be at the next meeting. When 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 will we initiate the process of a rezon?
If you if that's what you choose to do, you can go ahead and give direction to staff to take it to the planning commission.
Tonight. Through a separate motion from this.
I don't know that you need a motion.
On the property. Yeah, that that indicates that it could be rezoned.
Councilwoman Kenny had asked me if it's okay to put a sign out there and the answer is yes, absolutely. If the city wanted to do that, it it could put that in a sign on the parcel.
So so it could be, you could say. You could say this parcel can also be rezoned.
All right, so. Andrew, a question for you. Right, right now, we have a motion to put this out there as it's advertised. My question is, if we wanted to change the zoning. How do we initiate that? Do we start that process tonight through a consensus? How how do we get? In other words, I don't want to kill, I don't want a month to go by. I want, I want. Start to get this going. So how how do we start? The the process of a rezon?
You could provide direction to staff to go ahead and take it to planning because ultimately the actions that you take are going to be that, you know, on the first and second readings, once it comes back from from planning, you could do it by motion. You could also, you know, I I think it'd be good to take public comment on it. I mean, it wasn't an agenda item. But that doesn't prevent you from taking it up if you all wish to take it up. So.
You're suggesting we finish out. This business and then we come up with another motion to staff to.
You can do it either way. You can do it either way.
Okay. All right, let's counsel, let's just finish what we have in front of us. Keep it simple. Right now on item number thirteen, we have a motion in a second to put this out there as Ms. Odom has put it on the video. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
There was a motion in a second.
I missed it. Yes, aye. You you made a motion?
Yes, and then I think Ms. Williams seconded. Didn't she second?
Because I asked you, I said, I said, I said, are we, have we made a motion?
Oh, wait a minute, I'm on the wrong one. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
All right. Okay, I asked that question though. I said, where are we?
I was still up with number eleven. Sorry.
Okay, do we have a motion for item number thirteen? To the intent to dispose the property located at. Eleven eight oh eight North Ohio Street.
I'd like to propose a motion that we liquidate the property that is located at one one eight oh eight North Ohio Street.
Hey, do we have a second?
The motion is actually to authorize staff to advertise for the property.
Then I'd like to amend that. I would like to make a motion to authorize staff. To advertise the our notice of intent to dispose of public property located at one one eight oh eight North Ohio Street.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we've already. Discussed this all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four one. Now, just for clarity. Now, I want to make sure when we leave tonight, we have started the process of directing this to. For a rezon. So what do we need to do now? We need now to take this up. Separately to direct staff to start the process of a rezon.
That's right.
Okay. All right. Someone give us the language we need for that.
I would like to make a motion that. We direct staff to go ahead and begin the rezoning process. The property located at one one eight zero eight North Ohio. To rezone back to RBO.
Second.
Okay. We got it. This is a brand new thing, so just keep your thoughts. Is there any public comment, I guess, on this because we're creating a new new motion? And a comment to. Direct the planning commission. To take a look at rezoning it back to its original zoning before we purchase. Any comment on that? Okay. You have your motion. We have your second, correct? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, four one. Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't leaving here tonight and then. We realize we haven't done something and have another month.
Utility and electric, how long because we pay for that.
Until we sell it, because we'll have to keep the utilities on for a buyer to get you inspections.
Okay.
Some money.
Now we're going to item number fourteen, just a general council discussion of of the modular buildings. Chief has gone out and. Troy's been involved. I I visited one of the modular buildings. We now have in front of us some figures to work from. We have two figures with. Chief's design on a police building from modular builders. And we also have two quotes from brick and mortar. Builders in the area, I think Fagan and community builders, what they think they could do it. Or the figures seem to be pretty close. So if we are going to go to new construction. Whether it be brick and mortar or modular, we need a site for it to to be done. And we have. Discussed briefly, there is a piece of property on Powell Avenue. There's actually two lots that are three quarters of an acre a piece approximately. That are for sale. Beautiful. We've seen pictures on them. They're cleared, level. Do not need a. Building to be taken down. There's no clearing. And they can be bought for seventy thousand a piece or a hundred and forty thousand for both. So if we are going to go to new construction, whether it be modular or brick and mortar, we need to have a building site. Looking at the possible properties that are on forty-one, there are a few. They could not be touched for that kind of money. They're three hundred thousand enough, the ones that I called, I called on three. Whether or not one of these lots would suffice at seventy thousand. Or whether we need two, that would be something we'd we'd have to look at. But either either way. I know there are some issues. It's on the edge of the historic section. I've gone by there. There's already businesses there. Powell is also a thoroughfare. It is actually one of the roads we have considered to. Turn into our trucking to get the trucking from going through the historic section. It's right on the edge and the only thing I can say to council is there's never going to be a perfect solution to this. There's always going to be something you really want, you different or I want it this, I want that. Best we're going to do is get it as good as we can get it and go with it. And. I, I look at this right at, on Powell, right where you can go directly to forty one. Right where you have a turn lanes, there's, there's no blockage anywhere you wanna go, and you go right back into the historic section. You go toward Bot Springs, it's an excellent location for it. So if we're, if we are gonna go new, this thing to go now, go through the numbers. If we feel that the church building is appraised at four hundred thousand. I truly think in, in this environment, you can get a lot more than that for it. You couldn't build that building at a hundred and thirty dollars a square foot. A six thousand square foot building would cost seven hundred thousand dollars just to replace that building. So for us to think we can sell that building along with the six slots for four hundred thousand, I don't see that. Is a real issue as a businessman, especially if we change the zoning and we allow in a current commercial aspect. I think we might be, have stumbled in something that is possibility, we may come out. Smelling like roses on this deal. But anyway, if we just keep it at the number of four hundred thousand for the appraised value, and then we have three hundred and sixty five earmarked. In this year's budget, that puts us up to seven sixty five. You also have whatever the value of the current police building is. So let's just say the current police building and property is worth a hundred, let's just a little figure. So now you're up to eight sixty five. Well, our bids for the police building are, for the most part, even under that. So between the four hundred thousand for the Soul Harbor Church, the three sixty five that's already budgeted. The amount of money that the current police building might be. Worth. In my opinion, you have the money right there for the building. Then you have the, the lot to buy, there's gonna be some other things to go with it. So we're, we're very close, and that's why I'm kind of.
About a million.
I think anyway you slice, try to be honest, I think any way we go, any way we go, it's gonna be pushing a million dollars.
That, that's just why I.
All right, well, let me finish and, and you can sit. So where, where, where we're at with it, and that's why I'm kind of excited about expanding the zoning on the Soul Harbor Church. The more we sell the Soul Harbor Church for. Closer we are to having the money we need to do this, this whole deal. So anyway, what I would like coun- council to do. Is we have been going back and forth, not only this council, but other councils in the past, what are we gonna do with the police station? We have a solution in front of us, we have the money in front of us. It can be done, we can have a brand new police station within the budget and the money we already have. Built in a beautiful location, brand new, exactly the way we want it. So. I have probably struggled with this one since I was a councilman. This is the best solution I've seen so far. So if you ask me what I would like to do, what I would like to do is to try to buy one or two of those lots. Try to liquidate the Soul Harbor Church. We do have money in our general funds and our reserves that we can borrow from and pay back. As we liquidate property, it's, it's very doable. So that's where I'm strongly leaning right now. It's a solution and it's a good solution. So that's my discussion, we're on that. Ms. Covitch?
Yeah, I'd like to. Remind council and everyone else is here that these decisions that we make. Are decisions that are gonna stay with the city for not five, ten, fifteen, twenty years. That piece of property on Powell, the asking price for it now, and Mayor White, would you like to? What's the asking price on those lots again? I believe it's one forty, one forty two.
Seventy a piece, one forty for both.
What, I think the value. Of that property is beyond what the asking price at this time, I hate to say that in public, but. If you look at what's offered on William Street and how much is offered, and the condition of those properties and what it would take with. A way of excavation and bringing in fill and so on to make any of those. Two properties that are on William Street. The equivalent of what we're looking at on Powell Road, you're talking about investing another hundred thousand just before you could even build. The other thing is. We add value to that property when we put a building on it. A steel build module that we are talking about right now, and you have to understand that value will increase through time. It will not depreciate, so I see it as a win-win if we go this route. Looking ahead, we know what's happening in our area of Marion County right now, that value. Property values will continue to increase, including. Those properties that are owned by the city, so this is an investment. Let's just say down the road. That we do. Somehow, some way, I'm talking fifteen, ten, fifteen years from now, whatever. We would decide to disband the police department, okay, and go with Marion County Services. We would have a building there that we could easily sell for a couple millions as a medical center facility or whatever. Also, what the city needs and does not have is an emergency. What's the proper term? Emergency Control Center? Chief, help me out with that. Well, we talked about hardening this building in event of emergencies, we needed. Thank you, we need an emergency management center, definitely. We do not know what natural event would ever come to this city. And if we find ourselves unprepared, it would not be a good thing. The people of our city, all nineteen hundred of us, are depending on us to provide services and have a. Have a center where FEMA and so on would come, they have a place to, to gather and. We would have a hardened center there that if a mega cell, if a cell, high cell tornado came through here. That, that building would remain standing, it would be a, a center for a rebuild, whatever. You can't think that this city would not be untouched by some extraordinary event. Because every place those events happen, they say, we can't believe it happened. I think we need to prepare for the future, both, both economically and in the, in the, the fact that we need to. Continue providing the best of services to our citizens.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kenny.
I, I would like to know how, how those lots that you're looking at are zoned presently.
Because of where it's located, but without looking it up, I couldn't say for sure.
Then we should have an answer to that.
Well, I think in terms of. How much those properties are worth. If everybody is an RBO and we're putting something on a piece of property that is basically commercial. And it's in the same neighborhood, if I were in the neighborhood, I think I'd be getting me in, I would feel like it would be valuing my property. For example, if I were coming to Florida and I had chosen to live. Relatively close to a commercial center so that in my old age, I could take my wheelchair and run over there and get what I needed. Or if I had been paying, let's say, when I was selling real estate, people would come in and they would love this area because of its. General, natural assets, particularly the rivers. And they would put money down on a piece of property and they would spend several years of their working careers to. Pay for the property that they were going to build their retirement home on. Now they come back and it's next to a police station. And as much as, as we love police stations. Police stations with their automobiles in front of them are not conducive, in my mind. To the kind of thing that we were talking about earlier in the meeting with Main Street. Main Street is talking about investing in a community that has a plan, and when we keep changing all the districts. Which districts are supposed to have integrity? When you come into this town and you're wanting to go shop, shopping for a home or to, to build. You feel that if you're getting a. Piece of property and it is zone residential, that you will be able to use it as a residential use. The integrity of the district is why we have buffers, it's why we have. Consistency. When you put something that is totally different from everything else into a district, you will downgrade that district. Not only will you downgrade the district, but you will lose a couple of residential properties in which you wouldn't have taxes. Because whatever we do, we are not gonna get taxes from the police station. So even if it were to cost you more to put it in a more appropriate place. The aesthetics and the, the district and the walkable. Community that I envision we should have, not in my lifetime, but certainly in a future lifetime. Should be one that shows how much we care about the city that we live in. And I do not see this as an asset, not that location. Also, when we had red light cameras, we had a lot of problems on that particular point of, of, on Powell. And. We are talking about bicycles and we're talking about. Walkable communities, and now we're gonna put a police station. Which is heavy duty stuff. So myself, I think the location is very, very important. That's just me.
Mr. Mayor. Not that I like. Anywhere but where I said. That is an RBO zoning, the properties around it, this is coming from the Marion County Property Appraisers, they to map it. That property is RBO, the property side it is R three A, which is. R three A gives us. Multiple houses.
Well, R three A here is what we have in, I'm telling me at home in, in Banatista.
Right, right, so I'm just, so. Some of that property in the flood zone, just saying, AE. I mean. Looking at it from the map, oh, oh, yeah, really is.
Okay, Ms. Williams.
Well, I'll say it again, I'm so tired. And wherever they go, I don't have a problem with it, I just know, right now, our police department is sitting. In a unsafe environment. Unsafe environment and they need to move. And even if you push it down and stay there, there's no parking and forty one is crowded. So I don't see a big deal, put the police department on Powell, it's right down from my church.
Just very briefly. As far as, I understand, Louise, your, your point of view, but I've also done a whole lot of traveling around through. Georgia and South Carolina, North Carolina, when I travel, I get, I stay off the interstates. And I go through these little towns after little towns, and I have seen many a police station. Place right in the historic district, and what they do it with it aesthetically, with landscaping and elevated landscaping and so on. You could, you know, think a park with a police station in it, okay, make it a, a user friendly place.
To me, yeah, well, to me, that, the people that, that need to be voicing their opinion would be the people who are living there. So it should be posted, so the, the people would know what the intent of that sale.
Yeah, Ms. Kenny, this is just the process of, of the beginning of that, we're not making a decision.
That's true, it would come later, but I mean, that's what, but that's where. You have to plan ahead, you know what's gonna come later.
Well, that's the problem, the later. We can't, excuse my French, pussyfoot around with this. Y'all do it, do it. Because we have a place and y'all just put it out on the market, so. And it was a million dollars and y'all were having a hissy fit and you didn't like it in the historic district because now. It's already in the historic district, the police department is in the historic district as it sits today. So do it, get it over with, you already gave away the, the baby in the bath water, so do it. Get it over, get it done with, I am so tired of this, I wanna go home and I wanna eat, so let's wrap this up.
I swear, I'm feeling your love, believe me. I'm feeling it, I'm feeling it. Okay. So, we're talking about it right now, so I guess what staff would need. I've always been encouraged, come on, get into this.
And all of us got an expiration date, why you putting off for tomorrow what you can do today? We gonna all leave it here, we need to do something. This police department, we've been on that conversation for like, oh my God.
Okay, so, so Manny. I love it. Okay, come on, Mandy, I guess, do you need direction now to?
We have to put this out for the public to.
Probe, no, no, we're not doing, you need a direction from council to probe. The availa- availability of the property. Tighten up for sure what it can be bought for, check on the current zoning and whatever. Right now, we, this is a, a probing into, into the property, right? But. So what, i- if right now, if the consensus of the council is to go forward with, trying to go forward with this concept. And the concept begins with having a piece of property to put it on. What, and we found a piece of property we're interested in, what do we do now to start the process?
So I think the first step would be to direct staff to go back and bring back some pertinent information to council. So staff could just do as you're stating, contact and find out information from the seller, as well as do analysis as to. Any issues with flooding, with, with, if there is a flood zone, what the status is there. Looking at prospective zoning and other issues that might be faced, along with the fact that it's in the historic district, and so you, you. Have certificate of appropriateness and so forth that, you know, are unique to the historic district, all that information could be compiled and brought to council. From there, council wanted to, to move forward, you could. Basically instruct staff, I, I guess at that point, you could. Could bring back a instruct, it depends on how fast you wanted to move. I'm judging by what everybody has said, that this would be something you'd wanna move quick on. So the fastest way there, because you'd have to have, ultimately, you need to have a contract come back to you in order to, to make a purchase, obviously, and it has to be approved here in public. What you could do after you received all the pertinent information, embedded it and decided that's what you wanna do. Is instruct staff to go ahead and bring back a prospective contract. For you to review and sign. So you wouldn't have to approve the contract per se, but you'd essentially tell staff, this is what we'd like to see in it. And then staff could go forward and have discussions with the seller. And bring back a contract at that point, and that would be a little bit faster than dictating everything right on the front end.
Right. Okay, and how about the possibility of buying both lots for one?
I think that would just be the same, right now, you're at a research phase, so just instruct staff to take a look at that and what that would entail. From staff standpoint, as I said, all those, you know, those variables and whatever other variables staff finds important. And at that point.
Then when would council have the first opportunity? have the first opportunity to hear back from staff at the November meeting?
That council's next workshop, right? Next workshop.
It's about three weeks. And you probably would need that to get everything together, I imagine, two or three weeks, wouldn't you think, Ms. Odom? Right?
And I would recommend, not that I want to do anything, but if I did want to do something, I'd recommend this fine lots that we can have potential to put another addition on and just because it makes common sense, which sometimes not always here, but that's what I
Okay. All right. Do we need some sort of motion to direct staff to begin the process, the probe of getting us the information we need? Or do we just, can we just do that through consensus?
You can do it by consensus because you're not ultimately making a decision on the purchase. You're just directing staff to gather information to bring back to you.
All right. Can we have a consensus to direct staff to gather the pertinent information that we need to make a decision on this and bring it forth by the November workshop?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Ms. Kenny?
Well.
I mean, you're against, you're against the concept. So if you say no, I understand.
No, I would, I don't hesitate to say no. I think that the to get more information is important. But do I think it's the appropriate place to have a police station? No, I don't.
Okay. But the question is, are you at least for allowing counsel to get the information that needs? So you're okay with it? Are you okay? Ms. Covich, yeah. Quit looking at me like. Are you okay?
I already gave him my two fingers.
So, okay. So are you for the consensus or not? Okay, okay. So there is a consensus. All right.
Mayor, very much counsel. Mayor, normally I wouldn't interject in a conversation, but I see how you you're moving here. And what I would also suggest, perhaps, or just not suggest, but but put to you for consideration. Obviously, with real estate, things can pop up. We have a period of three weeks before the next meeting. Counsel may consider including in its direction to staff to also consider any other properties that may come on the market between now and the next meeting and perform the same analysis if it would appear to be in a in a good location. That's just a thought.
Smart idea.
So what are you, what are you suggesting to do?
What I'm suggesting is just include that in your direction to staff. If there's another parcel that becomes available that would appear by staff's you know, through through their recognition that it's a possibility for a site to also obtain that information and bring it back to you as well.
So can we just include that?
Absolutely.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, that will be very interesting.
That leaves, that leaves a possibility.
Yes, I appreciate that.
There's a parcel on Ohio Street we can buy.
So Ms. Kenny, what you need to do is get out on your horse and find some other places.
I'll start. I will.
That's not 300,000.
Yeah, okay. Good job, counsel. I know it. I've been with you. And as mayor, I'm catching it from all sides. So it hasn't been fun for me either. All right. We're moving on to anything else on 14. I think we covered that.
I think that covers it. Okay.
Going to 15 liaison and comments. Jan, you usually have.
Actually, our meeting is until tomorrow. I'll be back with you at the workshop. Are we going to discuss modular buildings?
That we did.
Yes, that's what that was.
Okay. At our next workshop, I just have more stuff that I researched on them. We'll hold that.
That'd be a good time to do it.
Hold that thought.
Okay, anything else? Okay. Ms. Kenny?
Let's go, Captain Kirk.
Anything on counsel liaison reports? Do you have any comments?
I do not, no.
And Ms. Williams?
I don't have any comments, but I would like to give a big old thank you to Troy. Troy made sure that FGA got on this meter problem in front of the big lot at the church. So thank you so much for that. They did fix that. Thank you. You always come to me rather quickly when I ask you.
But Vice Mayor?
I think I gave my last report about TPA the last time I went to that meeting. Much of a good meeting, but we're going to meet again this month. Regular meeting on the day first.
I don't have much. I just want to give you a couple of updates on some of the projects. So can you just pull up the photos? I'll just make very brief comment, just so. Public interest stuff.
Which one do you want first?
Which one you have? Okay, here we go. That's a good one. All right, here we go. There is our finished pavilion. I think last time when we showed some, it was under construction. That's the one, if you're looking toward the water up at the entrance, it's the picnic area to the far left. Okay, let her next one. It's another view of it. It's the construction underneath. And right there, that's when you're standing up near the entrance, that's what you're seeing. I mean, that just, that's outstanding and we have in our budget to put two more. It's going to really turn that park around. Now you have a place to get out in the sun. If it happens to rain, you can get out in rain. Sometimes it's just a short rain. I could be Troy, I couldn't be more pleased with how that looks. That looks, look at that view right there. That looks super. Okay, I just want to show you that. Here is River View Road. That's the finished product after they dug in. And Mandy, that's the other one where they put
Those barricades are no longer there now, by the way.
Thank you, Jack.
Six AM. All right. And that is what they were dealing with. Now, that was, you can see the road right there to the left. And they actually tear that entire thing out, tear the pipe that was collapsed, gave them a soda. They had to replace it with that. These are, these are sort of things that Troy looks at. Here, here was the shoddy work that was done sometime previously. You see the concrete pipe? It was attached to the terracotta pipe that broke. It was just jammed together. It wasn't even stuck together with concrete, correct? They just jammed it, jammed it in there and threw dirt on it.
Two different, two different diameter. So mud has been leaking around it twice.
It's just amazing. It lasted as long as it did. You go out with Troy and you look at the jobs, not only does he have repairs to make, but he has to fix what was done haphazardly in the past. The quality of some of these projects that were done, somebody there was no supervision, obviously. Okay, Mandy. And that shows you how deep to go down there to repair that. So, okay, here's the next one. Here, here's my final group. This is a, they're getting close to finishing up that
Oh, yeah.
The tunnel. Actually, you can see the cars up on top of it. That's 41. So it's clearly okay, Mandy. That gives you an idea how it looks going all the way through. I saw a little kid walk by, I says, would she post for me? Because I wanted to show how big it is. You could actually drive two cars through there. And that's how tall it is. And I think we have one more. There, there he is. There you can see 41. All that's coming our way. That's going to come, that's hooking into the Wipkutchi Trail, which is coming right into Blue Run Park. I don't know what the county is going to do with that tuber takeout because if all this comes together, it's going to be, it's going to be something else right there. Okay, Andy, that might be it. All right. So that's my report, just giving you all some photos and some updates.
I love walking. It's real, but man, I ain't beating a lot of bicycles.
Yeah.
And I'm going to have to find me somewhere else to walk.
Okay. If there's nothing else, we go to number 16, Department Head Comments. The Sodom wants you call people in the order you want to call them.
All right. How about you, Jan?
I don't have.
Troy?
No, the mayor covered everything. The only thing I want to just bring to your attention is Cherokee Circle is no longer flooded and we temporarily resolved that stormwater issue. And I'll be working with SWFMA to do a permanent repair down there, but we actually found the pipe today, was able to breach the end of it and get the remainder of the water out of that area.
And where is that?
Bottom end of the box springs. Yes, yes.
And I kind of gave you a personal challenge. They have those two other pavilions up by tax date, April 15.
That's all on finance and city clerk. You get me the okay, we'll get it done.
April 15.
I think I'm on vacation.
That's before the season starts. I think the goal is get those things up. We got five months.
Well, we just need to we need someone to write the bid. So hopefully Troy has a connection with KIMHOR and all we need to do.
Do you need any direction from counsel to get the process started?
I don't think so.
Okay. So I don't want to hear in November. We haven't done nothing because counsel didn't tell us what we want you to do. So if we need to tell you something, let us know. We'll tell you now. Ms. Odom, next.
I just wanted to thank you for embracing the Main Street program. Hopefully I can bring it in and make it work.
Did you enjoy the tour today?
I did. Thank you.
Could I, could I ask city, could you, could you update counsel on what's going on with the parking plug? Grant proposals?
The program is closed for this year. We missed the deadline. They had a lot of responses and they reached their milestones very quickly. Program is opening up in 2022 and our liaison has asked to put their manager in charge of that project in touch with Troy when the time is right. So we have an opportunity for at least a couple of stations. They initially mentioned 41, but I'm sure Troy will look something.
And just to let you know how interested Duke Energy is to get those chargers into Danellin, we got that updated email about 9:30 on Friday. 9:30 in the evening. So they're looking at Danellin and as soon as it's open and available, we'll get started.
Awesome. Thank you.
So do anyone else from your staff? Chief, do you have anything?
Yes, I want to thank the council for moving forward on this building. Just appreciate the effort you've put in it and it's very needed for the men and women who work day and night to keep the city going and keep the city safe.
Thank you very much, Chief. All right. I think now we go to 17, City Attorney's Report.
Yes, sir. I do not have a report this evening.
Very good. All right. If there's nothing else, counsel, do we have a motion? Second. All in favor? All right.
Historical record.
It's going to happen. Don't worry.